Okay, action.
Thank you, John.
I'd like to call to order the November 7th, 2018 zoning board appeals meeting. Tonight we have. Yeah, I know.
Chris Goodwin.
Kathleen.
Franson.
Franson.
Mike Wood.
Mike Wood.
John Stokes.
John Stokes. And I'm Jason Norman. We have two hearings, 2018. We're gonna take dash six ahead of dash five under the expectation that it'll be relatively short. So we will start there.
So, are they here? Are other people here for to? That would be Heather Mary, The Groomers LLC? If you want to, you can come up here. We should have a couple of chairs up here. You can just pull a chair up, actually. We're a little informal. Hi.
For application 2018 dash six made by Heather Mary, The Groomers LLC for a special permit to conduct a business as a pet grooming service located at 908 Salem Street, Unit 4, Accessors Platte 48, Lot 001D, in the industrial zoning district, according to all applicable sections of the Groveland zoning bylaws. Want to start?
Tell us what it is you'd like to do, where you're located.
I'd like to open a grooming salon. It would not be any overnights, no kenneling, just day in and out. Pretty simple.
Do you have a business now?
I don't.
No. So you'd be opening new?
This would be a new, a new business, yes.
Okay. And so, we did receive your application, so no boarded, no animals boarded. And then, you had hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
Well, because the rest of the building is allotted till 11:00. During busy season, I'd like to be able to stay open as long as needed, and as early as possible for things like Christmas and Easter.
Right.
Mud season, stuff like that.
Okay. So is, but what would your typical hours be?
Probably seven to six.
Seven to six.
And then extending them a little more busy.
Yeah, I thought it was a little late for. He's like, wow. A lot of people picking up at 11:00?
Since I think it's Nicole's, the convenience store, they're open late. So just in case we wanted to make sure we, that would be viable.
We didn't want to restrict ourselves if we didn't have to.
I see, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to ask, I just thought it was like really late.
I worked a lot of hours.
And I think the main issue we ran into when reading over the bylaws was just it wasn't real clear where grooming ended up, so we wanted to just formalize it.
Yeah, it seemed to not separate from that in kennel. It's pretty much a day spot for a dog.
Yeah.
Or a cat.
Okay. Did you guys read over the application? Any questions?
Yeah, no, everything seemed pretty straightforward, so I have no questions here.
My question, I do have one question about the sign. So, the sign that's there now is for the dance studio, is that correct?
For the dance studio. So it's gonna be the same size. It won't get any larger, it won't overhang. It'll just replace the existing sign with the exact same shape.
It was just, that's just like a flat panel, right? And you just put in letters and stuff?
Yeah. And the landlord asked me not to do anything for the sign on the street because he's planning on changing that, that whole panel he's planning on changing. So, we wouldn't put anything out there but maybe a banner, just because if you're driving by, it's this way, you wouldn't be able to see. So maybe just a one on, you know, a banner of down low.
Okay. Those were my questions. It seemed, everything was pretty much in the application, so. Did you have questions?
No, I just wanted to pull up the section of the bylaws, can we just cover that at least?
Okay.
The details there.
Actually, I did have one more question, now that I recall reading it. I know that there's a residence above, I believe, the pizza place?
Yeah, I believe there's a one-bedroom apartment, a single woman lives there. But my landlord doesn't actually own that part of the building, so I'm not.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I thought that that's what it was. He didn't own that unit.
Well, I know it is condos, actually. And some people know, yeah, but I wasn't sure who owned what. Some of, I know a few of them, I think, are all owned by the same person, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I guess my, my only-
It's during his noise?
Yeah, later at night.
Well, there won't be any late at night noise, because there won't be, unless it's like, you know, busy time. But even then, it's more pick-up, drop-off excitement, saying hello, but not all day, because it's not a boarding and it's not a daycare, so there won't be
Right, constant.
Yeah. And there's a, there's a pretty big, you know, the wall's pretty, the brick wall is a brick wall, or a stone wall, right, between the two, the cinder block. And there's a big separation from my unit to her unit, because the restaurant pretty much fills in that part, and then she's above the restaurant, so we're not really touching.
Okay. That's what I, I was trying to remember, like, how far over it goes. Because I know there is one there, but.
Yeah, yeah. She has, is, there is one there.
Okay.
You wanna help them know the hours that the dance studio was operating under, because my guess is it's probably gonna be similar.
Her's probably later, because the girls are out after school.
That's what I was thinking, like, she probably had music going, yeah.
If she had music going, then she's not gonna hear, you know, the blow dryers is really, what's gonna make the most noise.
And the dogs, barking, yeah.
If they're barking, yeah. But usually, they're, you know, they're only barking when they're waiting or excited to be picked up or getting dropped off. If they're barking all day long, the parents can pick them up. I don't wanna hear it either.
Yeah, just to clarify, the way the bylaws are written, specifically, the definition for kennel commercial is a commercial establishment in which domesticated animals are housed, groomed, bred, boarded, trained, or sold. And strict under the bylaws, you also need a special permit to operate under a kennel. So, by definition, you would need a special permit to operate in that space, but a grooming of terms of disruption is probably the very low on the list.
Right. Right. To get a kennel license, it's when you're actually keeping something overnight, stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, the bylaws, further as a kennel, but it's not real, the real use by a legal perspective for licensing and stuff.
Right.
Do they have any questions?
Any other questions, or?
Mike, John?
How long's the dance studio been faking it?
Couple of years, I believe.
I don't know.
When, when did the road project happen?
Last year, I think.
Last year.
Yeah, because they used that space.
Alright, so it's been a couple of years then?
Yeah.
Wasn't, maybe three or four years ago when this board decided that swapping out businesses?
Yes, but-
But was it the same type of business, or was it a new business type? I don't remember what the-
Same type of business, yeah.
Alright, so the only reason that we're really going through this process is because it's a different type of business, but a different, a business is going in there, okay?
No, specifically because it falls under the definition of a kennel, which does require a special permit. Under the new bylaws, they wouldn't need a permit if they were retail or another space. That's covered under the new bylaws.
But because grooming wasn't handled separately.
Defined appropriately, okay.
In the bylaw, so.
It is kinda odd, calling a barber shop a hotel. Running on the same thing, you know?
But it is, when they do animals, they kinda group it.
Right. I actually did just make a note for, you know, future, that maybe that should be looked at for the future bylaw.
No, other than that, I read through the documents. I don't have any issues with it.
John?
I'm fine.
Any questions? Okay.
Anybody here to speak?
For, against?
At all? Apparently not.
Going once? Okay. Alright.
Close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I don't really have any discussion, I think. I think it's pretty straightforward, actually. So. Any discussion down there? I assume no?
Nope.
Alright, so.
Motion?
I do. I was just about to. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 2018 dash six made by Heather Mary, The Groomers LLC, for a special permit to conduct special, to conduct a business as a pet grooming service located at 908 Salem Street, Unit 4, in the industrial zone district, according to all applicable sections of the town Groveland bylaws.
Seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
I don't think I vote on those.
You got four.
Yeah, I don't think I vote on these.
Doesn't make it.
I'm only here just in case.
It passed, so congratulations. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
And Julie will tell you what it is you need to do.
Great. So, fourteen days, the decision will most likely be written up and brought to the town clerk. And at that point, I'll be sending you a letter stating, you can pick up your decision, and then you need to bring it down to the registry deeds and register it, and they will stamp it, and then you need to bring that original back to the town clerk.
Okay, great. Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, next hearing is application 2018 dash five, made by Brad Legos for Nelson Street, Accessors Platte 47, Lot 32A, locating industrial zone for a special permit to construct two 4,620 square foot self-storage buildings totaling 9,290 square feet on a vacant lot for self-storage. Use required under the town of Groveland bylaws in accordance to all applicable sections of zoning bylaws, under Section 4.5. To come speak?
Can you pull up some chairs?
Yeah, yeah, pull up whatever you feel most comfortable.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Christopher. I represent Brad Legos. I practice law at 766 Green Drive in PB, Massachusetts. I also live in town. We're here tonight asking for a special permit on a mini storage facility. You're quite aware, you just read the dimensions, it's in a building. I'd like to describe this as passive storage, as opposed to the type of storage where contracting the coming and going every day, and perhaps even running a business out of the location. This would be more typical of what you in the past have used, storage facility. Household furniture, you may have a snow blower, lawnmower, lawn track, you might wanna store there for the winter. We would accept commercial storage, perhaps a painter might wanna store some ladders there, things of that nature. But we, the interesting thing about this storage facility is that it will have no electricity and no water to the building. So, if anyone has any designs on using it for administrative purposes, or things of that nature, running a business out of a storage space, it's not gonna happen. Probably be surrounded by a fence, will have a gate. People who rent the spaces will have a key to get through the gate. We are asking for business hours of 7:30, excuse me, 6:30 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. We will have some outside lighting on the facility that will be directed in a manor that won't interfere with any abutting residences or businesses that happen to be in that area. As you know, this is an industrial zone, and we're going to prohibit in the lease agreement that the tenants cannot have any hazardous chemicals or anything of that nature. We're aware we're in a, I think, Zone 1 of the aquifer protection zone, so we're going to make sure nothing like that will be there. And I do have here, with me is Brad Legos and Ian McKinnon, our project engineer, and Ian presented a traffic memo, that's the anticipated traffic. I'd like to submit this as an exhibit. And basically what, and Ian can fill you in on more details than I can, basically, they judge traffic based on the square footage of the buildings, the traffic manuals that engineers use. And this particular building, because 9200 square feet, the two units, they anticipate, based on statistics, there'll be just about four round trips per day to the facility on average. So it's a rather low impact use of the property for that particular locus. And that's essentially what we've asked for the special permit for. If anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them, or Brad or Ian will try to answer them.
You mentioned about the storage of hazardous materials. Would we be having a list of specifically excluding certain items? The reason I ask is hazardous materials come in a whole lot of shape sizes and descriptions.
We, because we're not, we didn't, we don't have a lease agreement drafted yet, because we're waiting to see what, if any, conditions are gonna be placed on it. We'd be happy to give you a prohibitory list of, you know, as part of the condition of the permit, be filed with, I don't know, with a right to know office, or I think it might be the fire department, or you get filed with the town clerk also.
That might not be a better idea. Just 'cause a lot of times, like you mentioned painters, stuff like that, a lot of times the other paints or the varnishes.
I believe latex isn't hazardous, but oil is.
Right, right.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get something here. And then I do, because I do have a bunch of questions, I just wanna make sure.
And access would just be in the existing Nelson Street access office, Salem Street?
I, do you mind if I? My biggest question is, there, it was, the application was for permit?
Correct.
But it looks like you probably also would need a variance, based on the lot size?
I would-
For that area?
I would suggest this is a pre-existing lawful, non-conforming use. And the planning board signed off on a A&R plan in 2013. At the time, this, which is what the, the bylaw in effect at the time did not give lot sizes for the industrial zone district.
There were no, no industrial zone specifications?
Well, I have a zoning memorandum, if you'd like to see it. It's a little bit obtuse, as zoning can often be, but let me try to explain it. Under this old bylaw that went in, was in effect right up until 2018, Section 3.03.6 indicated that lot size in the zoning, industrial zone varies. If you go to Section 9, the dimensional requirements of the industrial zone in this bylaw, it doesn't give a lot size. It gives, it just says that any building has to be set back 50 feet and 25 feet from sideline and from frontage. Therefore, proper interpretation of that bylaw at that point would be that the size of the lot, as long as you can get a building or a structure 50 feet back from the roadway, of a lot line on the roadway, and it meets the 25 side yard and ryan yard requirement, then that's a lawful lot. And at this time, this particular building, this particular lot, has plenty of room for a 50-foot setback and 25, 25, 25 side yard requirements.
Right. But this is 2018, under the new bylaw, that you're looking to change the non-conforming law?
Section 5 of the new bylaw says that any lawfully existing use in effect at the advent of the new bylaw, the new bylaw doesn't affect, it's kinda grandfathered in.
Agreed. I agree with that. However, this lot wasn't used as self-storage at the time. It was a lot, a vacant lot, I'm assuming in 2013.
It was a lawful use, because the lot was lawful. Therefore, the lot, it was an industrial zone. It was a lawful lot, therefore it was a lawful use.
But wouldn't you have needed a special permit even in 2013?
Not unless we went to actually do build upon it.
Right. Which is what you're trying to do now.
Trying to, no, but we're saying that the lot has been grandfathered in.
The lot, but not the use?
The use is grandfathered, because it's in an industrial zone.
Sort of, yeah.
Pre-existing non-conforming uses are, sometimes it's almost like how many angels could fit in the head of a pin? But, I wrote a memorandum, if you'd like to see it, it's four pages.
I think I would, actually.
I have one for each member, if you'd like to. And this, this law came from a number of different lots in 1937. It was a Woodland Park subdivision, and they reached about 5,000 square feet apiece. Whoever owned it back then cobbled all these lots together around in the 1930s.
Is there an extra one for Julie? Is there an extra one there?
She can have mine.
Oh, alright, thank you. I just wanna make sure she gets it for the record. Thank you. I just, because I wanna go back to the variance issue, right? So, if the lot was grandfathered, but the use wasn't grandfathered, but now you wanna make this use in 2018, under the new bylaw, where there is a, a minimum lot size that need, for development in industrial area, I think it just needs to be addressed one way.
Well, I would say in, under your new bylaw in Section 5, if I can get to it. The preamble says the bylaw shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence. Now, a use lawfully in existence is a use where the lot is a, you know, is the right size under the zoning that was in effect then, and the use is allowed with the same, the lawful sized lot. The two together, you know, constitute a lawful use. Even though they're not people storing stuff there, it's a use because the lot size is correct and the use is allowed by the zoning, therefore it's a lawful use. And it says right here, the new bylaw shall not apply to a lawful use in existence at the time of the bylaw being enacted. That's Section 5 of the new bylaw, says non-conforming uses and structures.
Yeah, I know, non-conforming. Okay, so, let's put that aside for a minute. So now, I do have some other questions. But I do wanna read, I do wanna go through this before I make this. I did look at everything, and I do have a few concerns, or questions, some, actually some are on the plan. Yeah. Most, one of them was about parking, and it says that there are nine spaces, but I, I just wanted to be clear where those nine spaces were. Is it?
So there's six, and then the three parallel spaces up there?
Six, okay, and then the three, okay. Alright. Thank you. I looked at it five times, I'm like, I can't see. Well, I think that was my problem, so I thought they were measurement lines, not necessarily parking lines. Okay. And then, so, is this on town sewer? That was my biggest question.
There is no town sewer, but it will not, there is no water going.
No restrooms, no water, no nothing?
No water, no septic, nothing.
The only service will be electric service per down caps LED safety lights.
The lights. Each unit will not be illuminated, the owners, they won't be able to do anything.
Won't be light bulbs inside each unit.
They'll have to use flashlights if they come after dark, or headlights from the-
How many units are gonna be in there?
Yeah, I counted, based on the schematic, and Ian can correct me, 22 units per building, so.
So 44 total?
Forty-four. And I think they break down as, I think 18 in each unit is 10 by 20, and I think there's, I think there's eight of four by, five by 10 in each unit.
And then I did have one more question about the plan itself. So, in the application, it says no proposal being made to alter the lot boundary under this application. But then if I look at, I think it's the bottom. Sorry, I need more space. So, but here, in this section here, it does say it's a new lot line. So, it does say that the new area would be 40,032. So is that changing, or?
That's already changed.
So this is a, this is just a copy. This is the recorded, in the registry, this is the recorded boundary.
Okay. So that was already done?
So what's in, yeah, what's in magenta is what is recorded with the registry of deeds, and that is technically the existing boundary of the property.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I-
So it's a little, yeah, it's a, it's a recorded subdivision plan, so it's gonna be proposed, and that's basically registering the lot.
Okay, so these lot lines have been in effect since?
2013.
2013, okay. Yeah, 'cause I was reading it, I'm like, new lot lines, but it says, it's not changing?
Yeah, I, that's, that plan tells them it is existing property lines, just trying to clarify.
No, that was good, I just wanted to double check that, too. One of my other concerns was about the access on Nelson Street. This street is real tight, and there's like a big fence right here, right? And so, I was a little concerned about emergency vehicles being able to turn in there, which I think- You'll prob, the planning board will probably address with you and fire department and all that.
We've actually had meetings with-
You have already?
We have come to technical review committees. I think we've been to two now.
I think I was at one of the meetings where the fire chief was present. This is about a year and a half ago. He didn't have a problem with, I think it was the old fire chief, didn't have a problem with the engines getting down there, so there's adequate turnaround space and everything.
And that's why the second, essentially it would be a gate that has a Knox box. They, patrons cannot use that, but it's essentially an emergency gate. For some reason, they needed an extra access point for many of its purposes, but.
I figured they would probably, I didn't know that you had already been there. I figured they probably would address it with you, because it seemed awfully like a tight turn with this big berm here and everything, and I'm like, tight.
Yeah, and it's an existing 40-foot right away, it's a private right away. It's not plowed by the town, so it is narrower than the standard, but it meets private right away standard.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, my question, my other, the last one, I think, was about signage. What were you planning to do for signage? Anything?
What's the, what's the size requirement on a sign?
You're gonna make me look it up?
Is it four by 10?
Can look it up.
Four by eight? Four by six?
Well, I didn't, I didn't see anything on.
I don't need anything, you know, maybe down there, just so people know where it is.
Yeah, something on the fence, two by four or something like that.
On this fence?
Well, maybe a little bit higher than the fence.
Salem Street or on?
No, no, just on his property.
Up here?
I don't think we'd have a right to put it on Salem.
No.
No, that's why.
Unless you have, unless you get.
Permission to get.
Right, you can't have off-premises signs and stuff like that, so.
Be one sign, maximum twenty square feet in area with.
Four by five.
Yeah, I just didn't see any reference to it or nothing on the plan or.
Yeah, that hasn't been chosen, yeah, but it, it would need to meet, usually our, our standard site plan notes will have, it's got to conform to the town, it's only by law, so it would need to meet this necessary setbacks.
I did have a question about coverage. The lot coverage, you have is twenty-two point nine pers- percent. I don't know if I actually fi- this was a note I made as I was going through. I don't know if I already figured it out or not. So I was trying to do the math and. Can you address that a little bit about how the calculations are done for the lot coverage?
Right, the lot coverage is based off of impervious cover. So that's the total impervious paved space. Does not include roof space, which I believe.
The bylaws, they're a percentage of the plot or lot area covered by the building area.
Oh, so that, right, then the lot, well, propose, for the bu- proposed lot coverage, so building area would just be the total building coverage.
You divide the lot area.
That's literally the definition of lot coverage. I'm not sure that's.
Can I just say that again? Percentage of the plot or lot here covered by the building area. Because I did see the calculations here. I just, I, I just wanted to verify it with the bylaw, because I, I know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify that part.
Doesn't say anything about the impervious area, impervious coverage?
There is no definition of building area specifically. Impervious surface. Definition. Material or structure on, above, or below the ground that does not allow precipitation or surface water to penetrate directly into the soil.
But nothing about whether that affects lot coverage?
Well, that's what I'm looking to see. If that's, that's just a definition. It's not.
Okay.
Uses and activities requiring special permits. Any use that will render impervious more than fifteen percent.
Yeah, I see, I see a max percentage.
Section six two.
Right, so that, we took that as the maximum. Go ahead.
Right.
Right, minus the building coverage. Okay. So thirteen point seven percent.
Anything over fifteen percent would require a special permit.
Over fifteen percent impervious?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the total impervious?
Well, this is why.
The total.
By definition, that would include the buildings and the paved spaces.
Well, the, the lot coverage is taken as a measurement of the building, and that's limited to.
Yeah, but that's not impervious space.
Correct, so that would be, that's the governing of the twenty-five percent maximum.
He has the calculations here. I just wanted to make sure it.
Right, and then.
Match the definition.
Yep, and then max impervious area is under the fifty percent.
And my last point, for now. I reserve the right to ask more questions, but, um, but on the front, on the front plan here, if you look at number six, it says that you're going to comply to New Hampshire DOT. So you're probably going to need to change that for your next round.
Mass.
To mass, yeah, yeah. It may have a problem.
His office is in New Hampshire.
I know that. I figured, but I just wanted to make sure, because you're going to need it for your next.
Yep, for planning board.
Right. Because they don't care if you comply to New Hampshire.
That's a lot more strict. You want us to call it there?
Exactly.
Yeah, you said that was in the aquifer protection. Because that's where the fifteen percent impervious comes up. That's more strict than the standard industrial.
I vaguely remember this. Weren't you in front of us a long time ago for the other building on Nelson? And we had this conversation about impervious area at that time, too. I vaguely remember that conversation. Anybody else have questions? Why is it all me?
I got a question.
Yeah. Shoot.
It's more about the, the business itself, so you said there's forty-four units, nine thousand square feet, but only four round trips a day?
That's what the manual of the engineers use for design of, in, uh, traffic studies.
The international traffic, uh, manual. So it's, there's two ways that you can generally measure a, um, proposed use. You can measure it off of employees or building square footage, and usually based off of, um, if it's a retail use, usually it's a combination of the two. And so in this case, where there won't be any, they do have a, the standard off of employees, but that's geared towards facilities that have full-time office.
Right, I understand this is just going to be storage, but you're only anticipating four cars a day per the calculation on that exit.
Right, and that's, to me, I mean, some people are going to come maybe once a month to check their stuff.
No, I, I, I was more wondering how you're going to run a business of nine thousand square feet of storage with forty-four units and only expect four cars extra to go down that street and still maintain a business?
I would say.
You see how it sounds a little bit off where?
Right, so I would say, what I would say is, I guess, you know, initially when the business opens, there's obviously going to be, you know, as people throw, put their stuff.
Right, and they're not going to go there every day for it, right?
Well, once they're filled up, that would probably be.
Once they're.
Well, they'll forget about it and they'll send you a check every once in a while.
So there'll be an initial portion.
Right, because they're not going to, they're not going to forget about all their stuff that's.
Or if you're driven by these storage places.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, okay.
Or you may, you may get a time when college students are going back to school and folks.
So the four, the number four is an average based on initial, more, and then tapering down to probably none on some places, okay. I got it.
How long would your leases be?
I didn't do that much thought.
Like month to month, or?
Hopefully, you know, people would stay for longevity. But if somebody, you know, let's say you're moving, you have too much stuff, or you're doing over your house, you know, it could be a month, it could be two months, three months.
It would, by nature, would have to be flexible depending upon what somebody needs.
But the agreements would just be a month, month, couple.
Right.
But we, we are going to have written leases. It's not going to be any type of tenancy or, or understanding.
Okay, who just cares?
How long do you think it will take to build?
It's a pad set pretty quick to go out.
Quick, yeah, a couple of weeks to go out.
Well, with no water, no electricity, no insulation, it's just steel walls and that.
External conduit to the lights that are just casting an immediate pavement around the doors for safety.
Are you doing like those, um, uh, pre-built steel buildings?
Yeah.
Do they just bring them in, yeah? Do you have any other question? Do you have any other question? Do you have any other question?
No, not that I can think of it this time.
Thank you for answering my question.
Do you want to go over any more of the use?
At the moment, no. I, I'd like to reserve my right to ask about it later. After the public discuss, you know, after the discussion. Okay.
Anybody from the public, um, speak for or against?
Questions, comments?
Yeah.
You want to come up?
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
I live right across the street at three Nelson Street.
In which name, sir?
Michael Tardy. My questions, uh, you know, um, as far as the, I can't believe that the road is adequate enough for that type of structure or anything like that. But there's no drainage on the street. At some times of the year, usually in the spring, there's a, could be like eight, ten inches of water down in the bottom there. So, and there's no drainage at all in the road, so.
No storm drains or anything like that?
No. There's actually a calvert pipe that goes across, the water goes across my property to Sewell, Sewell Street, is that Sewell Street? There's a calvert pipe that goes across. It used to go out to the wetlands there. But whatever work they're doing in the road there, that's buried now, so there's no drainage at all.
Interesting.
Yeah, I mean, and he maintains the road there. I mean, it's.
Is that, they were saying that's a private way. Is that all of Nelson Street?
No, it's paved down to the end of my driveway, and then like his structure that he has out back, it's all gravel. So there's mud tracked in and out, dust.
So yeah, it's like the main entrance would be on the paved section, and then second entrance would be.
Yeah, I think the gravel works just for that emergency entrance, right?
Right. But that's like, but here is where the pavement ends? I knew it ended, but I couldn't figure out where exactly. Okay. And you, where is your property, sir?
Right there, across the street.
Directly across, like, if I look at this.
The house with the pool?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's better.
Google.
Yeah. Thank you. And did you have any other comments, or you want to add questions, or did you want to?
Those are my biggest, uh.
Concerns.
Concerns right there. And as far as like the proper setbacks and things like that, that, that building requires.
It does, it does meet the se- because they have all the setbacks put on the plan. I think if you look up here, too, you can take a look at if you have some questions, too. But it does meet the setback requirements where they've actually placed the buildings on the lot.
It's thirty and fifty, right?
So. I'm sorry, you're right. So it's fifty in the front and then twenty-five. Right, and then there are parking, um, parking setbacks that those are okay on that as well, according to the bylaw.
May I speak?
Yes. What's your name, sir?
My name's Richard Greenwood. I own a property on the corner of Salem and Nelson, Ansel. My main concern is it's very narrow there now. There's a amount of trucks going in and out there. It doesn't seem to be a big problem right now, but I think with the traffic flow of forty-four units, there's going to be a problem. My two bays are right on Nelson Street to enter my building. So in the winter, I've been maintaining that for twenty-seven years, plowing.
Up to the end of the paved area, you mean?
Right.
Where it's, okay, where the gravel. Now who does beyond that? Anybody?
I pretty much stop down by Brad's, you know.
Okay.
It's just going to be a traffic concern.
Your bays are like right here on the plan?
Right, and on the side of Nelson.
Like across from where this would be going in?
Right.
Okay.
It's two days. So in the winter, I plow that, and it's kind of a problem plowing out. Especially on the Williams side, because there's a fence there, so there's not really much room to plow the snow. And I can't plow it all the way down the end because I'm going to be blocking Brad in. So I actually have to sometimes plow it across Salem Street, which is a problem.
Yeah, I'm sure the highway group doesn't like that.
So I was just wondering if it's possible for them to enter Sewell Street and go across Brad's property to get to his, uh, addition.
I don't know.
How far down does Bill Daley own on that Sewell Street?
He owns in Sewell Street. He owns, probably halfway down.
From Salem Street?
Mm-hmm.
So that would put right at the back of the Tardy's place, right? And then that would be?
The entrance is right behind, um, to the left, or to the right of Joe Ryan's place.
Yeah. Right, that's Sewell Street, but, right.
And there is quite a bit of drainage problem there everywhere. It's, it's like a lake down there.
Yeah, everything comes down the hill. Everything comes down Nelson Street.
So it's going to be definitely.
Salem Street in there, so.
There's definitely going to be a drainage, you know, they'll have to deal with that. Not to interrupt the gentleman, but we have to go for site code approval, which we have to produce drainage calculations and things of that nature. Obviously, there's concerns if these gentlemen show up at the, uh, site code approval.
Do you have a date for that yet?
No, we were told to come here first.
Okay. I kind of thought that, but.
We were told to come here.
Okay. So, yeah, I would definitely, if that's a meeting, I would make sure you're at those meetings, if you're ju- concerned about drainage.
Yeah.
Because we do zoning. We're not, uh, we're not environmentalists. We're not, uh, water, you know, drainage people, but.
It does come up.
It do- it does come up from time to time, but it's not our specialty, or what we're, what we have jurisdiction.
What about like the maintenance on the road and things like that?
I think that also comes under planning. They would, they would address that as well. Mostly zoning is just to figure out if it's zoned properly, if it fits the law, if it, if it meets the zoning, um, regulations. And then, then it goes to the planning board, and they look at all of that kind of stuff. Including fire, the fire chief comes in and they figure out, can they get in, can they get out, that kind of thing. But I brought it up tonight because it just seemed obvious to me, just looking at the property, that it might be an issue coming in and out, so. But it's not something normally that would be on our list of things to address, but it just stood out to me. That's why I asked, but. But, yeah, they definitely would be dealing with drainage, all of those concerns that you have. And the street being not public, being plowed, who's going to deal with all that?
Right, yeah.
Well, and our, our stuff covers use, which means the general neighborhood and how it would impact that.
Agreed, and so, so in this case, drainage isn't, you know, because that would impact, the use would impact the neighborhood.
How it would impact the adjoining properties and how it would, so not literally, whether or not it'd be environmental issue or a health issue, but just overall.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Gentleman here, we'd like to, oh, hold on, there's another gentleman for the public, I'm sorry.
Joe Ryan.
I'm Joe Brian, eighty-sixty-five Salem Street.
Hi.
I own two lots above Brad's lots. And I see no problem with what he wants to put in right now. It's industrial land. He has the right to use it where he wants to use it. And I see Mr. Greenwood wants to put use Sewell Street. I own property on Sewell Street. I own three hundred and fifty feet on Salem Street. I have enough traffic on Sewell Street now with just everything parked, a business on that street. And his parking lot is twenty feet into Sewell Street. I have a plan by a court order, and it was, he paid half, I paid half, and it's recorded in the register Ds. And you just draw that plan from the register Ds, you can see how much stuff he's built in the street. I mean, don't put the traffic on my side, put it back on Nelson Street. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And can I ask you a quick question before you leave?
Joe?
Uh, I'm sorry, I just was, do you own property on Nelson Street as well, do you say? At the top here? Like this is Salem Street turning onto Nelson?
Yeah.
And so.
Where's the top of Nelson Street?
The top of Nelson Street is right here. So this would be, so here, on the corner.
See these two lots right there? Hold them on. Bring that back up, man. Little piece right there.
Oh, okay, so you're further down Nelson Street on the gravel section?
Huh?
On the gravel parted section?
No, right at the top of the ninety-foot cliff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the program right away continues up the hill.
You just had a night bus and it went down.
To the quarry?
Yeah.
Continues back.
He has an elevator, he's surprised.
All right, yeah, I've walked back there. So all the way.
See them two lots? That's it, right there. No, not them two. The other, that one right there.
Yeah.
There was two when I bought them, but now it's combined to one.
Okay.
So, right back there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The other end of the.
What are you talking about up here?
No, it's like on the other side, there's this one, then there's another one of these. So he's behind all that.
Any other comment? Anyone else have any comments?
Any other comments or discussion? Any other questions from?
Have you, obviously, the neighbors have just said that there's a drainage issue down there. Have you looked at that as part of your plan?
Um, yeah, so I think the area of concern is mostly, it's actually kind of on the edge of where our property, it's the natural low area, correct, is on this side. And you can see there's some sedimentation from, you know, just the, the entire hill comes down, the road does pitch down as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have actually, we started doing a full grading and drainage design, um, and then working with Sam. And the town, they told us to come here. So before completing that, we wanted to, but we did begin it. So, a stormwater permit will need to be applied for. Uh, we'll have to demonstrate with watershed plans, drainage analysis, um, to the state standards that we aren't contributing more runoff off-site. What I've found from this is that we're actually going to be bringing more onsite, just because of the nature of, we're showing uniformly created gravel drive, um, which will pitch water to us, um, just from, we don't want low points either. We don't want sitting water. So, the pond onsite will need to be designed for any stormwater contribution to the property. But again, yeah, that'll be covered with the planning board process.
I knew that, but I just figured since they were, this was a big concern, I figured as the engineer, you were probably already thinking about it and had maybe some thoughts on it.
Yeah, obviously, we don't want Brad to have an issue in the future either.
Right.
With sitting water, so.
Right.
It's, it's a lot of sand out there, which, uh, we're proposing an infiltration basin. There's not really much of a natural outlet, which means we actually have to basically oversize our basin to a degree to contain all that water, so. We kind of have a self-contained site that we have to design to meet the town standards.
Okay. I, I figured you had already been thinking about it, so.
Yep, that's our next step.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
Close the public hearing?
Discuss.
For discussion? Um, what do you guys have for discussion?
So what specifically, we're just looking for a special permit on the use as self-storage.
Mm-hmm.
Far as we are concerned.
Well, this is, I, I did wanna take some time to actually read the zoning memo because I'm just concerned about the variance issue and whether it would be required. So I just wanna make sure it's addressed one way or the other, and I have some way to say how that's gonna work.
Yeah.
That's all. So. We could take a little recess if you want, while I read if you want to.
Yeah, we can take a five-minute recess.
So we can review what we have. Five-minute recess at eight twenty-five, Julie, second.
Say.
Thank you. Thank you. We basically wanted to reopen the public hearing so that we could continue to discuss, so. We're still gonna discuss amongst ourselves, but, um. So I had time to read what attorney Christopher submitted, and and there's a lot of good points in there, but I will say, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't say one way or the other. It's his opinion.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay.
The building inspector by statute is his own enforcement. And in issuing a building permit, he has to make the determination whether it's a lawful use and lawful lot. I would suggest that we're here asking for a special permit to use the property. We can't use it without a building permit to construct the buildings. I think if there's a question of whether a variance is needed or not, my opinion varies, you know, maybe somebody else.
Right.
I would suggest that if you're inclined to think this is a good use of the property by special permit, then it's up to Sam Jocelyn to determine whether he's gonna give us a building permit or whether we have to go back and get a variance, and that might be solving the problem.
Well, I was just trying to see if we could figure it out now.
Okay.
And address it at the same time.
Yeah.
And let you know if there is an issue, a procedural issue.
Okay.
But upon further review, in my opinion, I feel like I, we should have, because this is your opinion.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure that we have someone from town council probably take a look at the opinion and see if they agree on the variance issue.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna make sure it gets addressed, that's all. I don't.
Send it to town council, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I think I'd agree with that.
Yeah, I, I'm not an attorney, so I don't wanna make the determination here, but.
That memo was directed more to, to, you know, tell, tell you folks if this was a lawful lot at the time the zoning occurred. The issue is, does section five of the new zoning ordinance, excuse me, by law, when I see? The, does section five grandfathered in, or does some other section, like the approval by the planning board? I think town council should know all of that part of the issue too.
Right. No, I agree. I think that's one of our other questions too, is whether, you know, the grandfathering is applicable considering, considering when it was initially zoned, it was zoned as a vacant lot. And now it's actually a use intended for.
My, my, my issue, my, my determination is that when you say lawful use means that you have a, dimensionally, you have a conforming lot that's zoned for the particular use. Here we have, the use never changed when the zoning occurred, it just changed dimensions. Therefore, it was a lawful use, even though nothing was on it, it was a lawful use at the time of the zone change. And therefore, under section five of the new zoning, it exempts it, uh, because it was in existence at the time of the zone change. That, that's basically the argument.
So what is the issue with the existing zoning laws that you wouldn't, you would need a variance for?
Uh, my, my thing is, we don't need variance.
Doesn't look like it, so I'm not sure.
No, well, I'm, what I'm concerned about is the lot size.
To the lot coverage or?
No, no.
Just overall?
The actual size.
It's actually.
What is the actual size?
The area.
See here?
Yeah.
This is what's required, and then this is what they're proposing. So my question is, is there, in addition to a special permit request, do they also need a variance request?
Yeah.
With that? So that, that's what the issue is, and it's all based on just the lot area. The setbacks are fine. It's not the, you know, the setbacks, it's the whole lot area. That's all.
Yeah, I'm also just.
I just don't wanna run into problem later on down the road if we can address it now. That's all.
I guess my concern with that one would be that the minimum is the one acre requirement, so essentially any use would require a variance on the law. Is that, so you're sorry saying kind of in conjunction with the special use or any, so say we're dropping a permitted use, like a business office or something? Is that essentially that would require a variance as well?
Well, because now you're going from vacant, right, because right now it's a vacant lot, to development, right? It's not like it was an office building and now you wanna change it into a self-storage. It was already non-conforming at that point. But because it's vacant now, I think that's where, that's where I'm struggling with it. Because it's going from vacant to use.
Right, so I guess, I guess I see it as if, if we were proposing a permitted use, essentially we could have gone right to the planning board and I, I guess the lot side seems to be the issue, but.
Yeah, I just wanna, and I don't know what the answer is. I just wanna make sure that it's addressed, that's all, and that we have it reviewed, that's all. Because I don't want you to run into trouble further down the road because you didn't come back and get the, you know. And there's a waiting time for that, as you know, so if we figure it out now, then you don't have to run into trouble with a long, you know, appeal period later on again. And delay construction and all that, but just, because I've been there. It's tough, you know, if you don't get the right stuff right away.
We were under the oppression from the new planner and Sam that it was an A and I lot in two thousand and thirteen. Recorded with, well, within the three days after, it was A and I and signed by the planning board. That freezes it in time to today's zoning. So it's grandfathered in, and that's what I was told.
Right. And that's a determination that we did get from Sam, is that we are, he denied us the building permit essentially based on a special use permit.
His referral to the board was based on
Special permit.
Special permit only, not, not.
Okay.
He didn't.
It was a general lot.
I mean, we can take a vote on the special permit and then, you know, not worry about it, and then if you have trouble later on, you may have to come back, that's all. That's your risk, not mine. I, I'm just trying to button it up early.
That's what I think why Sam, if you vote just on the special permit, then Sam can say, no, no, you need a variance. Or he can say it's grandfathered in and has zoning enforcement offices, I believe this is grandfathered in.
Basically, you're just pushing it back to Sam and saying, does it meet the requirements?
Yeah.
As long as this board says it does, and then he says it does, then you're covered both times.
Which he did say it did.
Well, don't put words in his mouth.
I think that's what his written response was.
Well, uh, yeah, so in the application, it was his denial was specifically for the special use.
Right.
Yeah. So apparently, at least from his letter, he didn't have a problem with the lot size.
Right.
Well, he may have done that because if you look in the table, it's automatically special permit, so he probably maybe waved you along. I, I don't know what the.
I wasn't at the meeting, but there was some discussion about grandfathering on that.
Okay.
And it was, this was brought up at the TRC meetings.
Okay.
And there wasn't an issue. Going to town council, knowing how lawyers operate, including myself, they wait longer than, no offense, because we all were very busy on it. I've dealt with town council, I'm in there. Very good, but too busy.
Yeah.
And I'll go one further. Brought the whole situation up to the town planner before she went on the attorney move, and she, she agreed with Sam.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's good, huh?
I think we seek a special permit, special use.
So.
I think we just go for the special permit.
Special permit for use and then just not address the variance issue.
Same things we need, it will come back.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I have no problem doing that. If that's the way you wanna do it.
That's fine with me. I just was trying to address it now if we needed to. That's what I was getting at.
It falls on us that we need to then determine.
That's fine, but if we have to see you again, that's fine. I'm trying to help you out. Like, let's figure it out now, but. So, any other discussion on the special permit use? Anyone?
Well, my only concern with the whole project itself was the, was what potentially could be stored there.
Definitely a concern.
The fire department will probably.
Yeah.
Well, in the aquifer, when they do the, the permit for the aquifer or the, the review for the aquifer district, all that, the impervious space, all that stuff will need to be covered for.
Well, you, you had mentioned about getting a listing of chemicals that are gonna be banned, um.
Essentially, it would fall under the actual, gives a state statute that.
Comply with the aquifer protection.
Yeah.
Correct. There's a section here with the, um, the state code on it, talks you can have those materials that isn't written in that entire zone.
Okay.
Essentially, they have to comply with that.
Yeah, no, that's good, because that's definitely come up before, so I just wanna make sure it's addressed.
Well, the impervious space might be an issue also in the aquifer space, so. Because then bylaws stipulate fifteen percent of impervious space in the aquifer zone.
Right, so, but including the building area or not, that's the question, right?
Well, the bylaws include all impervious space. It doesn't, it includes the building area by the definition in the bylaws.
I think in site clear review, that, that would be addressed.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
But it's also.
That's not, that hasn't had to do with the use of special permit. That's just an issue that may come up.
No, I agree. Right. Potential issue. Okay. Any other questions down there? That end of the table, that's so quiet?
I walked up and asked a few.
Someone wanna make a motion? One way or the other?
Well, I can't do it, so that narrows it down to four. Make a motion?
No, I don't.
I don't know how to word the motion. That would be the issue. I am not a lawyer either, so.
Well, the motion is simple. You can kind of go through what, what you have here. But, and then any restrictions that we have discussed or talked about or whatever.
I'm not sure what restrictions.
As I said, do we want to put any restrictions on?
We, we ask for certain operating hours, six thirty to seven, seven days a week.
It'll have to be addressed also. Actually, I do have a little lot of information.
That's what SD Pac has now.
Yeah. So, and then the que, I know we've touched upon it briefly, was employees?
No employees.
No employees, zero. So how do people rent a space?
It'll be all software-driven. It'll be all computer-driven, be a DocuSign.
Keypads and stuff?
Keypads. Software to lock you out.
Or you could, I mean, or you meet onsite.
Well, I'm always down there, so I could meet him onsite.
But no permanent office.
But yeah, there wouldn't be an office with someone at the gate.
No office, nobody at the gate. Keypad, you don't pay, you won't go. What a world.
So it was six thirty to seven?
But in terms of maintenance, you'll be, yeah, and you'll be local, more or less.
Local.
Yeah.
How about holidays?
I didn't give it much thought. I mean, I, probably not Christmas, you know, but if somebody needs to get in there in emergency to get a table, a banquet table, I think they say no on it, you know?
Yeah.
Here's the chances of somebody showing up on holidays.
Pretty slim to none, I mean.
So with the software, with the software that I'm pressing eight, would that, would that just define it to a certain timeframe, certain days of the?
I don't know if it can, you know.
But once you have the access code, you can just come on anytime.
I think you can limit the time, but not exactly.
Yeah, you can limit the time that it will work and whether the code will work, but I don't know if you can do it by the, the date on a calendar.
He doesn't mainly that day, probably.
Yeah, you'd have to override that. That'll all depend on the system.
If you're inclined to, to limit holidays. If you're inclined to, to limit holidays, I think would have to be self-enforcing, if it's in the lease, you can't come here on holidays, and you'd have, it's a lease violation and.
The only real holiday, like the two major ones, would be Thanksgiving and Christmas.
How about Groveland Day?
Groveland Day?
It's an important holiday.
Yeah, no, that, I don't know that the holidays necessarily be, be an issue, it's just. Something to keep in mind.
Sorry, I'm just going through some notes of different things that'll have to go into the decision, so I just wanna make sure we cover everything in the, in the motion. Most of this talks about hazardous chemicals and things like that, so that would be part of it anyway. Maybe something to go to the planning board, all kinds of, so it's gonna be, I'm just gonna write down.
Protection district is gonna heavily restrict what they can do there anywhere.
Right, I know.
It's not.
Just trying to get my head together so I can make a motion. There you have them. Yeah. Okay.
I was just thinking if you have.
Okay, I think I'm sorta ready.
All right.
Fire away, all right. I'll make a motion, where is my agenda? Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve application number two zero one eight dash six, I'm sorry, dash five, excuse me, made by Brad Legals for Nelson Street, assessors plat forty-seven, lot thirty-two A, located in industrial zone for a special permit to construct two four thousand six hundred and twenty square foot self-storage buildings totaling nine thousand two hundred and ninety square feet on a vacant lot for self-storage use, required under the town of Groveland bylaws, in accordance with all applicable sections of the Groveland zoning bylaws under section four point five, with some additional requirements added to that as well, with hours of operation being six thirty AM to seven PM.
Correct.
Being closed on two holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas Day, maximum number of employees is zero, there's no employees. The sign would comply with zoning.
Correct.
And.
Specify maximum number of permanent employees on site, as opposed to just employees, because.
Because if you have one.
They might have maintenance, somebody doing maintenance, or somebody helping, or.
You know, clean it out, and if somebody leaves.
Okay, so maximum number of employees would be?
Say two?
Two.
Two. Signage would, signage would be in compliance with zoning bylaw, and talked to Sam about that, that would go for him. Parking spaces will be nine on the site. Deliveries, pickups, so, meaning people bringing in moving stuff, they would only be able to come in between six thirty and seven, right? Nobody's moving in at twelve o'clock at night, dropping stuff.
You know they're doing something bad if they're doing that.
Well, that's why, okay, so I just wanna make sure it gets into the, into the. Motion, thank you. And then, it won't have any hazardous waste, and the applicant will supply a list of things in addition to what will be.
A list of banned substances?
Thank you.
As, as, as materials, not like no waste, yeah.
Yeah. Um, subject to going in front of the Groveland planning board, receiving approvals from them, and the fire department, and board of health if required, I don't believe so, but. And. Compliance with the aquifer protection district requirements.
Yeah, you almost see that hazardous waste, it could fall under that, so you have to comply with a lot.
It's really both, but just make sure it's addressed all around. And I think that's it for my motion. You want a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Glad you had a little session, man.
They've, they've, they need a copy, just so I have it for tonight, because then I can actually write up the decision along the same lines, so. Julie saved the day, as usual. Thank you. All right, so what's next on the agenda?
Minutes? They don't have.
Scratch that.
I didn't know I was supposed to write them, I didn't know I was supposed to write them. I did take notes, but I thought you would get it from Charlie, so I, I thought I was.
I was just thinking we had a video record, so I'm thinking of actually writing it down at the time.
Do you wanna scan the notes, me and someone today, and I can?
Sure. That was the October meeting, right? Sorry. It was our first meeting without our chair, we were like, we were a little scattered. John got locked outside, it was a whole mess, yeah.
He couldn't open the door when we got here. He gave us the wrong key.
This is all because Julie wasn't here, like Julie gets, gets everything going, you know, leave it to me. So, no minutes to approve, invoices?
I just handed you.
That's what you just handed me.
Oh, I just sent.
Sorry, I, I crossed you as you were writing there.
Somebody's gotta keep them, isn't it, right?
That meeting they had, about the horse property, and all the different boards, they're getting a written opinion from their lawyer, Dufanet's property, that people wanna come in with the big horse collars and stuff.
Where is it located?
Off Center Street, Dufanet's auto down, past that, back inside there.
Oh, right, 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 yep.
And their lawyer is writing up an opinion saying that it's under farming, commercial, under farming and commercial operation under that, and he is gonna render, you know, send that in to Sam and the rest of the boards, and let the legal eagles talk about it. That was probably two or three weeks ago, or whatever, I just stopped in and, you know.
Thank you for going to that, 'cause I, I don't think any of us were available.
No, and that's why I went, 'cause, you know, I had the time, so.
Thank you.
I have some stuff here, but if anybody wants it, if you wanna put it in the records or anything, but I, I, I think it's gonna be okay if their opinion holds up, because they won't have to come before us, because it's agriculture.
I see.
You know, and it'll be with planning and the rest of Concom and the rest of that.
All right, that's good. One last one on.
Saying that has to come here, that's.
The gist of what I got out of the deal. Thanks for coming, we don't need.
They're gonna make them come here if they don't think they have to.
So I, if, if that opinion is correct, then we're off the hook.
All right, that'll be good. I'm just looking at the invoices, did you guys look at them already?
I did, but.
You did? Okay, so it's for Eagle Tribune ads, one for four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and one for two hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
It's fun, huh?
Well, I've sat on this board for years.
I was on it years ago.
One was four hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah, I was here, in town, not on board.
Um, it brings me to another thing, I was thinking about the, the budget, you know how Julie, we were talking about this, we've done this in the past, where we take a look at, like, this individual applications or whatever, and see how much they cost us, and whether we need to reevaluate the fee? 'Cause it looks like some of these legal ads have probably gone up, and I know that, like, the, so, is that something that maybe we could talk about next time? Put it on the agenda and have some info, so we can maybe talk about the fee?
Yeah, I mean, we could have them pay for the, 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 two, two forty?
Especially something to think about, included in the application fee, the fee for any advertisements?
Well, it is kind of, we did take that into consideration, but.
Yeah, it's just.
But what we've done in the past is that, like, every six or eight months or whatever, we just kind of reevaluate it.
See where you are.
'Cause sometimes the legal fee, uh, the, the ads go up, sometimes, you know, especially, like, some, some applications, we probably make a little money, but then the other ones, we lose money, so usually, it's been sort of even.
It'll wash us out.
Um, but we've kind of reevaluated every six or eight months, so that we can just make sure we're still sort of on that track. We've been sort of breaking even up until, that's why I was thinking maybe we should look at it again, 'cause it does look like some of these have gone a little higher than they have been in the past, so might be a good time.
And they did cut our budget in half.
Yeah.
And so maybe that's, maybe we should just have them come down more, and they can put in their own legal ad. We can give them the garbage, and then put it in themselves, and, um, I know other boards do that.
That's why I was thinking if we had.
A lot of conservation.
Can we get that point, require them to put them in a certain space, or is it just then open to for them to put wherever fits the literal Massachusetts law?
Well, the newspaper does that, they have a whole legal notice section.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, but, but the, I don't know exactly the scope of the law in terms of exactly how it defines, you know, it defines a newspaper, or, you know, by circulation and stuff, but I'm not sure if it specifically defines the area that it needs to be in, and where. Do they need to put it in the Eagle Tribune, or could they put it in, I don't know, other newspapers around here?
Well, that's the problem, there's really no.
Well, we could ask Concom and see what they're doing, I know with Concom, when I went through it, we had to pay for everything, and then we had to bring in the cards to prove it.
Yeah.
Return, I mean, it's more work for whoever to check the cards out, but.
Because I think that, you know, if we don't put it in there, then somebody needs to go through and verify that it was done.
Well, they, they usually bring in legal ad up, too, so.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, I was thinking that if we had all the information from like the last grouping, then we could really sit down and decide.
See if that really is.
'Cause then if they're gonna pay for that, then there still should be a fee, 'cause there's still other expenses, so what are those fees, and how much do we charge to go through that, you know, so.
The fees are on top of the mailing.
Right.
Right.
Wow.
So.
But it's what it is, you know, it's a cost to do in business.
Right, it, so, but with some data of like what actually they were costing, so then we can kind of figure out, okay, if they do the mailing, then what do we need to cover our end, then, that's all. So, next meeting, can we do that? All right. Thanks, Charles. Anything else, anybody else have any questions?
We need to sign the invoices.
Yeah, oh yeah, we do have to motion on those, but, did you look at them already? Oh, she has them already.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
All right, um.
I'll make a mo, mo, motion to, to, to pay the two invoices on hand?
Yeah, we gotta do them one at a time.
Well, you gotta read, yeah.
Yeah. Can we have those back for a second, Charles?
And then I gotta sign them.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, you get to make motions. I'm sorry.
It's all, we didn't have your lefty today.
To make a motion to approve the invoice for November sixth, two thousand eighteen, invoice number two thousand eighteen dash four, in the amount of four hundred, payment to Julie House in the amount of two hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-three cents, and another one in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifteen cents, for a total of four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And. Motion to approve bill payable schedule, do we just have an invoice number, or are we not carrying?
No, they use the date.
No, just the date.
Just November seventh, two thousand eighteen, to the Eagle Tribune for four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and another to the Eagle Tribune for two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, for a total of seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Just sign them up, and, here you go.
What is the actual cost per?
It depends on the lines.
Yeah, but, I mean, is it like a hundred bucks, or is it, it's a?
You usually go, so you could see, like, here's one for the groomers, and then you have the legals, groomers, groomer, so there's two, 'cause you have to run it twice.
Mm-hmm.
So, and it depends on how many lines, like, you can see legals is probably more, I would imagine, 'cause there's probably more to that. Legal notice.
Two to three hundred. Which I think is most of our fee.
But, well, a lot of it's postage, too, so that's why we look at it like kind of on the.
Well, no, I mean, two to three hundred is most of our fee, to be honest, so.
Right. Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at?
Nine twelve. Somebody seconded. All those in favor? Very good.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.